Call to order this town council meeting, that's February twenty seven, twenty twenty two, at seven fourteen P M. For open please rise the legislative allegiance, all by one sentence.
But the way is through the flag of the United States from America and through the Republic, or which is bands. One nation, one a good God, in this is all.
Thank you, room to be seated. Proclamation and presentations. So we have one before us recognizing longtime employee Tina Benheimer. So whereas Tina M. Benheimer's status is changing to per diem after sixteen years of service as a part time A. Now, control officer with the town of Tallinn. And whereas Tina has been an invaluable member of town staff, having extensive knowledge of state laws and town ordinances related to animal control. She consistently exhibited fairness, compassion, dedication to citizens, all while keeping the best interest of animals at the forefront. And whereas since her appointment in two thousand and six, she has worked diligently to modernize and streamline the inner working study, the animal control department. And whereas Tina has annually exceeded performance expectations. And whereas Tina has earned enormous respects for the of those she has encountered during the years of service upholding animal control laws. Responding to public inquiries, investigating animal related complaints, retrieving roaming animals, caring for impounded animals, resolving neighbor complaints. And whereas Tina's many professional contacts and town friends will miss her work ethic and unwavering dedication. Now therefore be it resolved by a town town council or by the town council of town of Tallinn that hereby recognizes and thanks Tina M. Benheimer. For her professional and personal dedication to the town of Tallinn, its citizens and the thousands of animals that have crossed her path. We honor to remember her service to the town and offer our best wishes for the future dated at Tallinn, Connecticut, this twenty seventh day, twenty twenty two. Thank you, Tina, and I'll open the floor if there's any council members.
I appreciate everything. Wanted to donate sixteen years without this very year, though. That's how you do that.
You're right.
Yeah.
Tina, I just want to say. I just want to say thank you not only for your service here in Tallinn, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you are going to do now. Which is something very important and going to be a dispatcher for the police is the state police is a huge accomplishment. You should be so proud and I thank you truly from the bottom of my mother's heart for for going out there and taking care of our troopers. I wholeheartedly wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from councilors before we do a group photo for Tina and Chief in the council?
Tina, best of luck to you in your good job.
Thanks.
It is a thankless job and it's gonna hurt, but it'll be rewarding and you'll have opportunity to save lives with your words. And the best of luck to you and town holds a place for you should you ever need it.
Thank you.
All right. On behalf of yourself who's back. We're truly gonna miss you.
So I missed you.
You get a badge from sixteen years. It is leaving it is leaving a huge hole in all of us and I think everybody that's interacted with her. She has been my backbone, she has straightened out a lot of stuff. She's still gonna be a mentor for everyone coming here, your knowledge, your the community, the other towns. You were the you've been a backbone and I would have never been able to run everything without you. I truly miss you and I mean it.
Did not change your mind, though.
Did not change.
Thank you, I appreciate it, of course.
Thank you.
Did you want to do a photo with?
Yeah.
You have the whole council with you, Tina. Where would you like, upstairs?
Yeah, here it goes.
Of course, you're we're in the center. Yeah, all right.
What can you get out of this? A lot of people know, things just need to finish up and I won't be there. No, I don't think so. Doesn't matter.
Try to hide, thanks for hiding.
Picture just very good.
Good change.
Carol, if you wanted to give my guess.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Me. Thanks for not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Didn't make a picture, we do.
Thank you so much for taking even recognizing, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so move on to item five, which is bulk additions, communications and bulk participation. On any subject within jurisdiction of the town council with a two minute limit. If you are on a mobile device, you can hit star nine, otherwise if you're in person, you can approach the front table and identify your name and address. Or you can the raise hand function if you're on Zoom. All right, go on once. Nope, you have one, we got Claude at Morehouse.
Well, good evenings, Claude at Morehouse, eighty nine Merlot Way in Tallinn. I guess I'm just looking for an update on what's going on with the contaminated wells. Haven't heard anything and winter's coming, which means more stuff on the road. My water, my water's gonna be worse as the chloride levels climb. And I just wanted to know where we stood on the grant or bringing in the water as what was mentioned. I haven't heard anything, I mean, sometimes there's a lot of chatter and then there's like nothing, so I don't know what's being done, what's being said. Or any updates that you can give me, thank you.
Thank you for that, I think perhaps maybe the manager's report, if there's any updates, Brian can provide some to the community that that.
Yep.
Or if you want to now, I can.
Um, so in regards to it's it's a work in progress and the answer is we don't have to solve. And I don't know if there is gonna be an easy solve to this matter in a holistic sense to the whole town. I can tell you in regards to salt distribution in the coming winter, the town of Talent is is one of the best, if not the best town. In regards to responsible spreading of salt, that has been going on since two thousand and nineteen. I don't have the exact terminology in 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 front of us, but we work with D E P and the University of Connecticut. I believe it's the Green Snow Pro Program that we use to be incredibly responsible. And that that includes measuring and and distributing the salt in a minimum amount of way in the most responsible amounts. I can tell you that the in regards to your neighborhood. The the basins have all been cleaned out and they had had never been cleaned out and we're getting a look at it and we're gonna look at aggressively. Aggressively addressing some of the physical it physical modifications we can make to help protect your wells in regards to that.
Okay, thank you, and um. What is? I mean, I have taken pictures of salt, you said the even distribution on the roads. I've taken pictures and sent them in and they're in piles and clumps and it's ridiculously thick. So how do we know that it's evenly distribution distribute distributed?
That's a great question, so our spreaders on our trucks, we we have some of the the again, or if not the most advanced. Technology in the spreading of pounds, quarters, square mile and how it's distributed in gauged. And moreover, the gauges are tested for accurately regularly, if if not before each storm on on at least on an annual basis. And I can find out, I know I I I put out some of our our salt talking points and Claude, I'm happy to forward you some of the the measures we've taken. And exactly what we're talking about right now in regards to some of the things that the towns are the towns done aggressively to. Really manage responsibly how we put down salt on roads.
I would appreciate that, that would be great, but you know, when you're on this side of the issue. Five and six years without drinking water is getting to be a bit much and something really needs to be done. I have no potable water and it's 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 going on and on and on and I know it's it's a work in progress, but. I don't see anything moving forward with this other than people telling me it's a work in progress. What's the progress other than, you know, calibrating a truck that I see dump piles and piles of the salt on the road? I fear this winter again, every winter my water gets worse and worse and worse. And I would love to challenge that report from the D E P that says it's it's both water system, water systems and road salt. Because I was on the webinar with the state of Connecticut back in two thousand and twenty, I believe it was. And the gentleman on there said the most dominant chemical in my water is road salt. So that contradicts any report from the D E P. It's very frustrating at this point.
No, because there's standards, absolutely, Claude, I I think there's gonna be some updates coming through and I definitely think Brian will work in right. Regarding any grants or any other progress that we can find.
And I'd be happy to forward the the pictures of the salt on the road that I took this past winter and it was a mild winter. Be happy to share them. Thank you.
Thank you, Claude, and I think there might also be an update something about the grant process and we have maybe Brian might be right either now or maybe the manager's report.
I don't have that now, pardon me.
Okay, all right.
I can, there were a hundred and seventy applicants for the grant program. And they're supposed to be opening up the I U P for public comment and public hearing. Of which I would expect the town would have somebody go to to talk about the public comment piece of it. After that, the all of the draft projects and ranking will be done and the priority list will be released. But they're saying that the the final D P A sent through E P A for their final review and approval will be later this year. That's where the grant program stands right now. And I checked a week ago and they said they're taking a little longer than anticipated, but they're going to have it up for public comment. I would assume by the end of September, beginning of October, hopefully.
Hope it's enough. Thank you, and Susan Bueck Hughes.
Hi there, thanks, good evening, thank you, Chair. I just have a quick question. I am most interested in the agenda item eight point three and I I see that it's listed as a discussion. But I wondered if there would be any public participation in that portion of the agenda item? Or if it would just be discussion amongst the town council members?
Uh, thank you, Susan, I know we did extend invitation that links the historic district and the commission people with disabilities to provide any input for that discussion item. So absolutely, if there's anything that you'd like to provide, you could certainly take that that feedback similar to what was done during the discussions on the ADA accessibility. Report for the fields.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no other public participation. We'll move on to six, which is all hearing items, which is a consideration on a resolution to amend ordinance fifty four, which is the designation of voting districts. I spoke about this at our last meeting with a few changes for Rose from District one to District three and one that is in District two to District one. There's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Almost.
Everybody else, somebody, is there a second? Second, all's in favor or any discussion?
I.
All's in favor, something, I.
I.
Is unanimous. Public hearing is now open, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on the six point one, you can raise your hand or approach the table and state your name and address for the record. Come once. One twice. All right, I entertain a motion to, oh. Len Bach, okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Bach, you can take it off a mute.
You might. There I am, I've got it figured out, I thank you very much for this, it makes it a lot easier for us now at the registrar's office. We just have to notify the people at a hundred old post road and everything will go very nicely now. Thank you very much for your participation in this, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bach.
Yep.
Right, seeing no other public comment reservation, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved, so moved by counselor, move by counselor Nuccio. Seeing no discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, is unanimous, public hearing is now closed, is there any further discussion on the resolution to amend ordinance fifty four?
Council, Murray? I just wanted to thank the registrars for providing us with maps and all of this information. I think the. The lines seem to follow the updated state legislative lines, so that's definitely a step in the right direction. Not always something that gets accomplished by every town, so thank you very much for doing that so well. And I think moving the voters at Parker Place to be able to vote in the same building which they live is is very pragmatic and a good idea, so thank you very much.
I agree. All right, seeing no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in six point one.
So moved.
Second.
So by counselor Luba, second by counselor Nuccio, seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, all right, so move back up to. Seven A reports of words and committees responsible to the council. So counselor Luba and I myself have the first organizational firehouse subcommittee meeting on Thursday at four thirty via Zoom. So we'll be going through that process and getting an update on the project in time lines. And council, Murray, any updates to Ridge Grove?
That, not the sweeping.
Sounds good, so then we'll move on to seven B reports of town council, okay, no, my apologies, harvest committee.
Oh, we go around, yeah, thanks a lot. Tim and I can update together in the. Our for one because Amy's been spearhead in the recreation thing and it's coming to light. So Tim, if you want to fill in everybody on that, but I just want to say that the town is expected to get their next sum of money on October third. So one million four hundred nineteen dollars and six hundred and one million four hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty seven dollars. I did my math, ready to shoot for an hour. Part found, but Amy just filled a little bit, filled with two point nine million available. And I also want to add in for Amy, talks about the recreation stuff is. As a subcommittee, we've probably talked about over thirty different ongoing ideas and we're doing a really good job, I think, that and everything. And I think the next thing we're bringing to the council next month will be exciting, so, Tammy, I'll let you fill in. Rest of the council, I don't know what you've been working on. Don't need to do that.
Yeah, of course.
So one of the big things that we'll be bringing forward, which is great, is we've, you guys know I've parked on it and Colleen has humored me in the meeting. We've had a lot of meetings on it, but we are looking at bringing forward, we're gonna do subsidized recreation for the next eighteen months. At a fifty percent subsidization for all of the children and some of the adult programs, including even the summer camp. So we'll be looking at starting this winter, going through the six months of the fiscal year and then the full next year after that. So getting kids back out, away from everything else, back out in public with people and doing sports and stuff like that, it's good for their health. It's good for their physical activity and that, and it's one of the purest uses of this COVID money. As to look at the people who are impacted and make a change in their life, so we'll be bringing that one forward. Taking us a lot, we debated every aspect of every different thing on the recreation and that, but we think we've got a good solid plan. Not gonna be too much money and it's gonna be able to help the town out and it will also help the recreation department out. Because it will get them more people coming back and into the programs, so it's definitely dual, twofold, possible.
Bruce has been at our last three, yeah, he's happy. He's been at our last three or four meetings, I want to give a shout out to all staff that goes, especially Bruce, he's definitely put in a lot of work to show. The need and different options, so. But and then I can talk about the other two. Communities that come on, so. My show of people with disabilities met on September fifteenth, as we know, John Maltoney stepped down from being the chair for various reasons. But now Susan Hughes is our new chair or the commission's new chair and Kim Little is the vice chair. And the secretary to be voted on at the next meeting when a couple of the members are back. And then today we actually talked about the historic district item, so that was something that we briefly discussed. They also briefly discussed the works voice plan that's being worked on at the state level. And another great thing that they want to do is from the commission is discuss in their group, a proclamation made to the two Girl Scouts. That did that excellent presentation and. Other task force, September nineteen, John and I on the mental health task force. There's a new alternate rate position opening up on there, just someone stepping down. We reviewed information, recommendations. That's been working on, is that something that might be coming to the council, I believe, is a mentoring program that they're gonna be suggesting that the community needs. We did a three prong, step one, school age monitoring K three twelve within the school systems. Additional programming similar to like a big brother, big sister and job skills. And we talked in depth a lot about what H back, that H, no, H B C C offers, right? They offer a on the job like training type skills for different like clerical or just customer service. So no one brought that up, don't mean. But anyways, John, I missed anything, please.
You got it covered. We want to, counselor Luba, for any updates for boards of curriculums, if you leave is on board.
Uh, that the Veterans Recognition Commission met last Thursday, I was unfortunately unable to to attend that meeting. But I refer people to the minutes, I know that they're moving forward with considerations for the the wall. Or at least the walkway that they're that they've been discussing for some year design. For any veterans that are out there that we've gotten notification that there are at least two of our veterans on the currently on the commission that will not be seeking renewal. And reappointment so that we will have some vacancies for veterans that are interested. And I think that the one great thing is that this this commission is extremely active and I think that they're really trying to expand the scope of what what the mission. Is currently and really looking to focus on the assisting veterans that are in within the town for the various services or directions. And building upon other other communities, commissions, so I think it's a great thing and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, counselor Luba, that's a good chair.
So I'm calling up the P C C has been ridiculously crazy busy right now. When we sat down to talk about blowing out the Harvest Fest, so like the full vision of it and that, there was some consternation on whether we were gonna get enough food trucks or enough this or enough that. If you're not following the P C C's Facebook page, you should, because almost daily they are announcing new things. We've got several food trucks, beer trucks, we've got face painting, henna, we've music, like we got, somebody just contacted us about. Storytelling opportunities, it is crazy, the amount of participation that we're gonna have. The scarecrows should be going up, I think, soon, nothing within the next week or so, and then the Harvest Fest is on the fifteenth. And I think this is going to be Tallinn's premier event, so. If you don't like their page, go like their page, because it's crazy, the amount of stuff that's gonna be happening up here on the green, I expect to see everybody there. Everybody there with a donut or something, something good, but we're moving our next meeting, I just thought I was looking for, I believe it's it's moving. Up to the sixth and not tenth, just so we can get everything wrapped up beforehand, so lots of stuff going on with that.
See, there was the Water Commission on the nineteenth, they're planning hydraulic or hydro maintenance and flushing the next month. And despite some of the drought condition concerns, they said they'll be able to go through without any issues. I think things have gradually improved as there's been more rain, there were discussions on, I think it was a permanent interconnect, though, that there's some repairs that might need to be done in that area. Near well two and you had offered a few options they're looking at, but a range of anywhere from three fifty to five hundred thousand dollars is the estimate for some of those repairs, but. Other than that, I think the bridge projects for seventy four for that water connection, I think there's no major updates for that. And village at Crystal Springs is still an ongoing discussion between the Water Commission and and that group, so. Other than that, conservation had a sidewalk, they canceled their meeting due to rain, so that is it for me, I'm sure you can.
Thank you, Planning and Zoning met last night and they were visited by the Design Advisory Board. And they, the Design Advisory Board just talked about what their role is in relation to planning zoning. And their role is to try to identify any issues that may be on applications before it actually gets to planning and zoning. So there's sort of like a firewall for applications before they get to to planning and zoning. And they just talked about how they operate, they were created twenty years ago and they they're just an advisory board to to planning and zoning. And there was an, what I thought was an interesting discussion on what young professionals are looking for as far as housing goes in Tallinn. And it used to be, you know, the single family home with a picket fence and now a lot of these young professionals are looking for places where they can live where they don't have outside maintenance. They don't want to have to shovel snow, they don't have to cut grass, things like that, so that's sort of where. Yeah, so that that's sort of where the young professionals are moving toward is.
So my husband's. That's what you're telling me.
There was a discussion on affordable housing, they set a public hearing. And then there was a discussion on camping cabins. And it's really kind of remarkable how long you can discuss how many details are about camping cabins, those, these are wooden structures, no more than two hundred and fifty feet. Square feet in size and they they're meant for transient lodging and they're not supposed to be permanent structures, but. They're they're just discussed at great length, you know, how these can be used and who can use them. And they actually set a public hearing to define a camping cabin. And so they'll have a discussion on that in public hearing and then there was a a discussion on housing density and that's planning and zoning. And then W P C A met, I was unable to make that meeting, but I did review the the minutes and very briefly, there were just two connections made. On an old post road, one at the corner of Merrill and Merrill and Cider Mill, Cider Mill. And they discussed that both changed to the Vernon-Tallinn Inter municipal agreement and there are just some grammatical changes. Attorney Rick Conti is gonna review it and they're waiting for his response back, they don't think there've been any issues though.
All right.
And that's it.
Sounds good. Counselor, you're a colleague.
No, I don't have anything to.
All right, that's a great.
I I have the, I happened to attend Board of Ed. On September fourteenth, I said, there's a few things that I know. The Chair's already been working with the board on regarding the COVID relief fund. Did the talk to Brian about extension for submitting their capital budget requests. And there were some union agreements that were not rejected, I think is how that works by the board. And I think those come to us for us to reject or not.
Okay. All right, thank you, Council, Murray. All right, so move on to new business, I went one, consideration of resolution for an extension of the due date for the people who have taxes for access. Housing Parker Place at a marginal post road, we do have with us here, Diviasi from Access.
So. Yes. So on on August second, Mr. Diviasi from Access sent a request to the town manager's office requesting that his pilot payment in lieu of taxes. Be extended by one more year, keep in mind, last year they were extended and he wants to to do it again this year. He's gonna provide you with those reasons much better than I can. I can tell you, as you can see from the financial summary, each year it's about five thousand four hundred and forty eight dollars, so just under six grand. Is what he's looking to get waived again until next year, he's assured, assured me today in our meeting, he came out to to Tallinn. Is what he's looking to get waived again until next year, he's assured assured me today in our meeting, he came out to to town. That he's addressed issues there, and he'll get into why he can't pay and that he's serving that. He'll be able to do, they'll be able to do it next year, so with that, Peter, you want to lay out your concerns?
Sure, can you, can y'all hear me okay? So Peter Diviasi, I'm the president CEO of Access Community Action Agency. We are the sponsors and of Parker Place, Access Housing at Parker Place, and. This project, for those of you who might be unaware, goes back to two thousand and ten, where we started discussions about it. Came online about right during COVID, which is really the root of of the financial challenges, so. I I want to offer a couple of thank yous, one is appreciate the pilot being waived last year. And I also want to thank you for at least considering during that one more time, in my letter to. The town manager, I noted that this would be the last time that we would ask for this, we understand it's it's unusual, and. We we appreciate your consideration. Background, the the project came online, as I said, during COVID, that created a very difficult time in terms of actually leasing up the project. So while the project was completed and had expenses, we didn't have a lot of rents coming in. One of the funders of this project was funding that comes into tax credit investors. And when you take a longer time to lease up your project, the amount of money the investors give you declines, so that that set us back as well. Last year, we thought that we would be at full occupancy and be able to. Have positive cash flow and and be able to fund the pilot. Which we think is very, very fair, fair number that was negotiated back early on in the project. So. What's happened this year, and it's a little counterintuitive, when you build a new project, you think, oh, great, we're not going to have any problems, right, but we we are. We we own and manage over two hundred affordable housing units throughout northeast Connecticut. From Franklin to Wellington here in Tallinn, Brooklyn, Connecticut. But when new project come online, unfortunately, what happens is there's things that have to shake out over time, things that were not. Necessarily properly installed, properly done, so we had to spend twenty thousand dollars this past year on on repairs. To the building, including heat exchangers, a new key card system, roof issues, drainage issues. And I could go through the the details on those, but. It it, including sprinkler issues, we just found out that. Some of our sprinklers had been painted over when they originally installed, and so those have to be cleaned out at a two thousand dollar cost. So at this point, we have full occupancy, we've had full occupancy, we've we've been able to fund. These repairs that were were unexpected, unanticipated, and unbudgeted for. So we really think that this year's is we'll we'll be able to turn the project. To the black, so that we're having more positive cash flow, and we'd be able to to pay the pilot. If in fact you decide not to give us another waiver for another year, and again, I want to reiterate, in fact, this is the last time we we will ask. I did put that in writing to the to the town manager. That, you know, we will pay, we'll find a way to pay it, means we'll probably have to spend less than other programming that we do throughout northeast Connecticut. But we know we're obligated to do that if the town council decides that they want us to. With that said, I'm certainly hopeful that you do want to waive the fifty-four hundred dollars this year. And then we would engage in in paying that in November of twenty twenty-three, when it would come due. And I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have anything else you'd like to know, let me know.
I was asked by a resident, is is this a deferral to be paid later, or is it just waived?
We're asking for a waiver.
So I have a lot of questions, but I'm not going to get into all of them tonight, because I sat down there and talked to residents down at Parker Place. And there's a lot of maintenance that is not being done, not only in the building, but outside the building, the general grounds. The courtyard's not being open, fire hazard with that, there's a lot of stuff that I feel like Parker Place has not lived up to the expectation on. For the residents that are there, so you mentioned if you if you have to pay this. That there are going to be less that you can do in northeastern Connecticut, I'm going to be quite frank, I care about what's happening at Parker Place and not all of northeastern Connecticut. So I'm wondering what it is you're going to do to bring Parker Place up to speed, to fix the water issues that are in apartment buildings, to fix the. The doors that aren't kept locked, the security issues, the grounds not being maintained, the water that's coming off of the. Pipes and into the parking lot and such, so. Five thousand dollars is not a huge amount for an organization like Access Health, or I'm sorry, Access Community here, so. I'm a little just concerned with the conditions that are there now, and knowing that you've been fully staffed for the last couple of years. What is this five thousand dollars going to directly do to affect the residents at Parker Place?
Yeah, thank you for your concern, thank you for taking the time with our residents, I'd be happy to meet with you. At some point after this meeting to to go through some of the concerns and and complaints that came forward. Lots of lots of details about that, some of which aren't completely accurate in terms of of what I think you've been told. We've had the building inspector and the fire marshal come in to address some of those concerns, most of which were unfounded. We know that the project isn't perfect, again, with it running at a deficit, it makes it difficult to to do some things you're concerned with. We've we think we solved the problem of of leakage, we've got new downspouts, we've done some roof repairs, we've redirected water. The issues around security are are ongoing, that's a challenge, if residents are opening doors and leaving them open, that that's very difficult to do. But again, I I'd be happy to talk to you more in detail about the concerns, this five thousand dollars would allow us to put that money back into the project. And. Again, if we have to pay it, it would come from elsewhere, but if if we get the the waiver, go back into the project to to improve it. And as I said, you know, we did have to invest twenty thousand dollars this past year in repairs, so while the project isn't perfect. Our resident satisfaction surveys are. Overwhelmingly positive. And again, I'm not suggesting that the project doesn't have challenges, it's thirty-seven units. And we have residents with lots of different needs and lots of different levels of care that's needed, we're not an assisted living facility. We're simply a a location where affordable housing is provided, and our goal is safe, decent, affordable housing, so. It's been a long time partnership with the town, we took the town liability, turned it into an asset. During a very difficult time, just by coincidence because of COVID, so. That unfortunately created some additional challenges, as you all know, it's been very difficult to operate during COVID, and it's also been very difficult to actually get. Folks to come and do work, contractors, if you had to do that at your own home or your own businesses, you know how difficult it is. I'm not offering that as an excuse, it is it is a reality, and we are committed to to addressing the concerns there.
Tammy, if I could jump in for a second, sure, every, when I got your letter, obviously it was a great concern from the residents. When you went as state rep, right, to meet with them, anything that came across town radar, either. Our our building inspector, fire marshal, and Beth were all made aware of the problems. Did a group visit to the facility, and and as Mr. Diviasi says. And they're they're here, that's why the the fire marshal's here and and Mr. Packman's here as well, and and. Most of everything in that document. Was vetted out by them, and Mr. Diviasi gets accurate in that, some of them are greatly exaggerated, but if you have any questions, that's why I brought. Fire Marshal and Mr. Packman here.
So specifically the five thousand dollars, what are you planning to use that for, to improve the facilities at Parker Place specifically?
Well, some of it will 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 fund the deficit that exists currently, and now, and then that allows us to get into positive cash flow. We know that there are issues around landscaping, those wouldn't be addressed till the spring, we don't want to get involved with those going into the into the winter. We. Are very concerned about the water issues, and so we may have to add additional downspouts, there's also issues around. Some puddling behind the building that has that, obviously that five thousand dollars isn't going to do that. But again, that's part of the 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 positive cash flow that'll let us over time address some of these these challenges and these issues. We're we're we're, it's it's our mission to provide safe, decent, affordable housing, and we 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 work hard at it. This project has been particularly challenged financially, and that's that's been been a challenge for us for sure. But again, I'm I'm happy to meet and and go through the specific complaints. And provide you with more information as as you would like.
Well, I to kind of piggyback off what Tammy was saying and and sort of a follow-up. Your letter does say that this will be the last request for delay in pilot for this project. Could you send a follow-up letter to let us know that if we were to open this waiver, that those funds. Will be used at this location. Instead of being used, you know, as you said, in other locations. Our concern, I agree with Tammy, our concern is this one, and it's great that you're saying this, but if you could put it in writing, I think that. Might make us all feel, would make me feel a little bit more reassured.
Certainly, I think that that that's a very reasonable request, I do want to clarify what I said earlier. That if the council decides not to waive the the pilot, then we will have to take money from another program. To pay it, and that would that would impact services outside of Parker Place, if you do waive the. Pilot payment of taxes, that will will drive money to the project, that fifty-four hundred will stay in the project, and then we can spend it on the project. So I want I want to be clear about that, that that waiver is going to allow us to spend money on Parker Place and nowhere else. Without the waiver, we'll take money from another part project to have to pay another another program to have to pay that. Yeah, the the funds would be used, and I'd be happy to put that in writing, absolutely, I mean, I think that's a very reasonable request.
Thank you, Council, great, are there any other questions, Council members?
Well, like Peter said, we met with. About her name, but the manager that sits over there, but that's some of these problems that were pointed out, and I'll take your example. Somebody stated that they were actually exits of the blocks, block, they're not exits, they're not required to be exits. Required to be have that access to that, in fact, it's against the code. So that's kind of a little misleading to. It is where it is, the exits are clearly vetted. Another issue with the fire alarm, this has a fire alarm panel that's required by a certified. Fire alarm called the test annually, provide me with that data. And they do do that, same as with the fire. So they're doing a good job. Any other, is I can't remember the other issues.
Oh, I have a whole bunch, but that's. Well, no, because that that, no, well, I'll contact you outside of that, because as, you know, it's not, nobody else has this information, this was a meeting that I had. As the state rep, so. It's it's not fair for me to ask those questions, because nobody else is privy to that information, other than the town manager who got the copy. For you guys for the issues.
There's no other questions, I would initiate a motion to approve the resolution outline eight point two. So move back, Council, you to check, is there a second? Danny, that can, sorry, any further discussion?
Do we wait to get the letter, or can we add that? Under the condition that it's, we're getting a letter saying they're going to spend this money at Parker Place.
So I would say that we need to rescind the motion and have the resolution amended. To say that it's contingent on the receipt of a letter from Access. Guaranteeing the funds are being utilized for the project at Parker Place.
That motion.
Motion is amended made by Council Curry, seconded by Council Nuccio, any further discussion? Right, seeing that all of the favors, seeing that by saying aye, aye, alright, it is unanimous, so we'll wait for that letter, and then you're good to go.
I just, thank, thank you very much, I really appreciate it, I appreciate the ongoing partnership with the town. And I did want to mention that I think it's great, you allowed the residents to vote in the building, that's a very. Smart move, practical, and made a lot of sense, so appreciate you supporting the residents in that way. So I'll follow up with the town manager, and again, thank you, I really appreciate that, I appreciate this.
Thank you, Mr. DeBassi. Alright, so now I move on to eight point two, which is the consideration of a resolution, rather as a submission of a grant for the twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-three. Local branch of council grant offered by EMIS. Which can help motion division in collaboration with Regional Behavioral Health Action Organization. On our B H A O is amplified, so. Do you want to add anything else, or if you want to share any additional information about the application?
This is, this has to do with vaping and the money that the state gives us in prevention, but Beth can explain more.
Yes, this is a grant we've been getting for several years, and the state has chose, they've been asked the issue that they want to work on. So they put these grants out to the town, and Maureen, and and obviously during COVID, it was a little bit difficult to have access to. The kids, but she's done a really good job with working with the school system, she had a prevention special come in and talk about it, she tried to engage. Some of the high school students and doing a poster contest and getting a little bit more involved with that, to give them that the message out there. So we'll be reapplying with your permission, and and then you have people board on.
So what is the average dollar amount for the grant that we get from from the, I didn't get a dollar amount here, but I assume.
It's in the, wasn't in the resolution, but it's in the item summary.
Three hundred dollars.
It's like four thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Okay, so we on average get that amount every year, somewhere around that range, depending on what's dispersed.
Went up two hundred and forty-six dollars, so.
And is the public awareness mostly digital media, is it print, is it programs, is it all that?
Yes, and we'll be working on doing a Facebook and some other media or access, like kids are more aware of. On this as well.
Okay, is there any collaboration with the school system too, okay, you have a digital backpack or anything like that?
And we work with the police department as well.
Are there any questions, Councilors, on eight point two? Alright, seeing not an interesting motion to approve the resolution about on eight point two, so, right, Council Luba, is there a second? You know, for discussion, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. One, eight point three, which is a discussion on the scope, in particular, to readjust the stones, ADA standards on the line green. And I believe we have Robert Simon, donor of earthworks, and it's tonight to discuss the scopes.
Alright, so as you know, we had a study done on on the walkway situation and making it a little more ADA compliant on our green, a lot more ADA compliant. On our green, and the study came out, and we had a meeting here at council in regards to how to move forward, and we. Decided, it was mutually decided upon between the Historic District and the People's Disability Commission. To explore the option of resetting and leveling this, the existing historic stones. That are currently in place in much of the town green area on both sides. With that, as suggested by Ms. Bach, that we we. Get Mr. Simons to give his a professional opinion. I I concurred with Ms. Bach's suggestion as Robbie has been involved in stonework his entire career and has done a lot of historic work in the Connecticut area and is an expert. Mr. Simons and I walked Robbie and Mr. Simons and here Robbie and I walked, walked the green, the entirety of it. And it was quite a lesson in stone, and I thought I knew a lot of what Robbie gave it gave me a great education in in it, the different stones, where they came from, how they were cut, when they were cut. And Robbie, if you want to, you want to pop up here and sit at the table, he's prepared to answer any questions that that we may have. In that he was provided with a copy of the historic stone walkway study, we reviewed somewhat together. And now Robbie does not have a estimate of the entirety of the of the project, as there's a lot of unknowns. But certainly, he could provide you with his well thought out and professional opinions of pursuing the option of leveling and making the historic stones ADA compliant. So I would just ask if anyone has any questions. Go ahead and throw them at Robbie. He's prepared to answer in in regards to level, in regards to water and pitch. And, you know, one of the first things he said is the where the stones are now was likely leveled to the roadway when it was first built, and that, you know, if you stand out there, you can see the road is obviously up several feet, which I'm sure that's happened over the years. So but go ahead and and thank you so much, Robbie. I really appreciate you taking the time and yesterday walking the green. And I know you had actually done it prior to to some degree also when we first contacted you. So thank you. And and here's Mr. Simons.
Absolutely.
So I guess the first question is, what what is your assessment in terms of prioritization of the green and what areas would be addressed primarily if you were if if you were your professional?
What areas to be addressed? I mean, it's realistically what the what you guys are trying to accomplish there, because you lift one stone, you're lifting basically the whole green. It's it's a it's a large job. There's going to be a percentage of those stones that are going to break just upon handling them. Some of them haven't moved in, you know, one hundred and twenty years. You so when you go start moving one of those, it's they're going to break, and you're going to have to source one from God knows where. Stone's not the easiest thing to get. You think there's something easy, but they're not. Quarries are having problems with COVID issues with employees. There's a whole supply chain issue of things getting shipped in from surrounding states. Their their employees don't aren't showing up for work. They don't have employees. Late times are crazy. So if you specifically, if you want to do one particular area, I can talk about one particular area. There's stones ranging from two hundred and fifty or three hundred pounds there all the way to two, three, maybe two or three tons. There's a couple of very large stones out there measuring over eight feet length and three and a half to four feet wide. So in the walkway, I believe some walkways, Brian made a note to me yesterday that what do we do to get it four feet wide? A lot of those stones are barely three feet wide. You know, that's a good question. You know, do we do we replace a whole section of that? You know, all all stuff that really, you know, you you need to almost walk it and and be very specific on individual house members. You know, if you pull lift a walkway in front of the along the street, and you have to lift up some of these people's walkways actually to their house to get that back to meet grade. So it's a project. It's a very large project.
I can jump in, Chairman. The the scope of the job and the cost in asking Robbie, you know, what what's your opinion is, you know, is is this looking at the other options, looking at the study, what's your opinion of this? And and again, the once you lift one stone, basically, you're lifting them all. And we're not even getting the ADA compliant. The hairline fractures that may exist in these stones, and once you pull them up, and and then you talk about replacing them, that some of these stones aren't even cut to that size anymore. And he was very pessimistic about the opportunity to to do this project, not to mention some of the stones, albeit beautiful stones, have variations within the stones that make them out of beyond ADA compliant and and significant significant bumps and ridges and and different heights. And when it was bold that we saw, it was it was he 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 was pessimistic, to say the least, in regards to that, even by watching. Go ahead.
All right, I think, yeah. That's a comment, Councilor Luba.
What's your opinion? Because as you said, there's about three feet, four feet, it doesn't apply to the ADA compliance, whatever it is, is it worth spending time and money and all the effort?
You can certainly make it better. You know, whenever you do a large project like this, not everybody's happy. You know, the goal from on one side is going to be like, this is, you know, a million times better. Go on the somebody else's opinion on the other side is going to be that. It's just not good enough. It it's a lot of work. It's natural historic stone. It's gorgeous. I walked that walkways in when I was six years old. I lived within the one mile of Hick School here. It was Meadowbrook at the time. It wasn't even Parker. I walked across that green every day for the better part of ten years. Between middle between grade school and middle school. I mean, I got back and forth. It's it's different times. It's, you know, I love the walkway. You know, would I like to see it more level? Yes. But is it really feasible, doable? That's a good question. You know, I don't have I don't have the right answer for you.
Because the question was, as you said, once you pick up one, you got to pick up the second and third and fourth.
That's correct.
And then on the other side, there's a pavement and there's a concrete at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah.
So big one, you got to find one of them. It's God knows where it is and how much you're going to pay and.
That's correct.
So in my opinion, it's like, why don't you leave that thing alone, make it history out of it? And then do a second side work, but like it will it will not look. What I'm trying to say is like, how much can they spend on it?
That's that's exactly what it's really worth to spend.
The town can afford the new stone.
When I skimmed through the, you know, the study briefly, I originally thought the number was relatively low for lifting it and repairing it. The more I looked at it, that's probably an okay number to start with. It would be the breakage. It would be the incidental work that goes with it, you know, making other grades match. Again, you know, find finding the stone, sourcing the stone, that's going to be a that that's just a completely unknown. That there's there's I have no idea, you know, where I truly be able to get it. Some of the stone is very, very similar to what it actually is. It's local stone is some of it. But some of the local quarries haven't had a good stone in several years. So it all depends what vein they're actually working in in the in the mountain. You know, do they? They may have veins that that are buried under thousands of tons of of stone, and that they don't have permits to get to. So, you know, you could end up, I could end up making a special order for fifty stones and getting five that were legitimately worth something, you know, to put in there. So as Brian said, me being a little on on the pessimistic side, he's right.
So, Councilor Luba, Councilman Nuccio, and then I see we did extend the invitation to the historic district and the commission of people with disabilities to discuss. I could see Susan's hand is up. So after Councilor Luba and Nuccio, you can speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I mean, I think that a council hit the nose right and hit that hit the nail right on the head. That it's something that, in your opinion, that that's something that I really carries a lot of sway with me, and it sounds like it would be a lot of work with. And that's just to get the stones be generally level without even talking about the variation between the stones, the other other issues where that you may have with just natural surface of the stone.
That's correct. Yep.
And that, you know, that there was some talk before about the possibility of sanding these stones down to like the second level or something like that, which I mean, you know, and even then, that was something that was was, I think, not even was mentioned as a possibility, but that we didn't even have any real cost estimates or anything for for something like that. And then we're looking at the possible expenses of having a stone break because of that. So it's not, I mean, basically, it sounds like that if we try and do anything, it's just to sort of get it to be somewhat level and somewhat compliant, but not really what we're looking for.
That would be my guess as well. I mean, I don't know exactly what everybody wants, but it is natural stone. It's historic natural stone, which has got, you know, wear marks in them dips. Some of them are humped in the middle.
In the ten years that you walk, then you put those rules.
Exactly. I mean, that's that's exactly right. You know, I I actually stopped him at at the red and white yesterday, and I showed him one stone that just it's depression right in the middle, right where everybody steps, right by the front door. I love it. It's been like that forever. I mean, just this thing of how many people's foot actually stepped on that, actually wear into the stone.
Man, of course, that has some historical significance. So I mean, that's something that that, you know, means a lot to people. But at the same time, that you're dealing with a lot of the issues of of the stone and just, like I said, I think it just keeps coming back to me where we're trying to do something, but it's not really going to be good, good enough for anything. I mean, just simply, in my opinion, I is it just trying to level out the stones is, you know, we're spending money to get something where it's really not going to fit anybody's knee, other other than just trying to keep it historic stone there. Really, it doesn't the width that we're looking for doesn't meet the the level of what we're looking for. So I mean, I think that that I appreciate your input on it because, I mean, you're a person that does this on, you know, for a living.
Right.
And the other concern is the stones where if for because there's going to be breakage. I mean, I think everybody here knows that it's going to be breakage, and that's going to be stones that we need to replace just because they're already broken.
Correct.
So that we have to rely upon trying to match those stones because what I mean, I really don't want is us going about trying this and then having a piecemeal where, you know, it sort of looks historic, but not really, and you know, it you know, we we see that on the other side of the street where you have stone and then black up. And then I don't know what else there is. Yeah, concrete. I mean, it is there any, I mean, is there any proposal that you that you see that would be something that would be somewhat feasible, or is it something that we really just need to, you know, really look at to see what we want to do?
Yeah, I really don't have an answer for you. Yeah, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
I I can jump in. I I did. We discussed, you know, what's the most cost efficient and that sort of thing. And and, you know, I don't think that's certainly not his purview as to pick, but concrete being the the cheapest, right, and then from pavers to stone and and upward from there.
Councilor Nuccio, Susan Hughes's hand is off.
Thank you very much. I think you just kind of hit my thing on the on the head. So I got that one right.
Yeah.
Night seems to be the night of of our talking about things that we've been talking about forever and ever. So with this, your professional opinion, if you had to find a way to make this ADA accessible, to make the green accessible, would you at this point then say the leveling of the rock or anything doing with the historical rock is going to be very cost prohibitive and probably not successful? Would you suggest that we then look at putting the concrete in or something like that? An alternative like.
I'm not going to suggest putting the concrete in. I mean, I grew up walking across that
Yeah.
that green, and and I I like the historic part. I understand the the desire to make it ADA compatible and everything, but I mean, my preference is, again, I mean, I mean, I've walked ten years back and forth across that to get home. And, I mean, that's that's part of my life right there.
Would you would you suggest something? And obviously, I wouldn't think of tearing it up, but making something adjacent to it that would be.
Possibly. You you know, I I'd have to think about it. You you know, I I mean, some of the some of that's or fair amount of this is on private property as opposed to state property and everything.
Well, I think that depending on the lines, some of it is state, some of it is private, based on, you know, how far it goes in from the the road section. That's part of the problem. Part of this is private land.
Right. Yeah, I you know, I mean, I've been brought up in the in the landscape design business. So from a landscape design business, last thing I want to do is see two parallel walkways next to each other made of two different things. That's that's just not me. You know, could it be made dice and everything and look fine? Yes, it could to a degree. Um, that's just not me, though. I mean, I'm I I like the stone there. That that's just me. I I understand there's a need to make things more accessible. So.
Yeah, I like the stone too, but you know, we definitely have a community need for it to be accessible for people who are unable bodies.
Understood. Yeah.
Can you extend the can you extend the pathway to the stones and concrete? So it could be idiot and others. And the feeder tube or whatever it is. So it's like.
To combine the two, it would be, you know, aesthetically. I just I mean, I think there's options for everything. Yeah. I see Brian's laughing. What are you?
I know, but.
Robbie's a stone mason. He can do anything. He's going to do anything. It's got two things, his time and your money.
That's exactly. That's exactly right.
Taking every stone out, taking every stone out and trying to make it. And then even though you finish the job, if it did not break one that then those people is going to come always three feet, it's not four feet. How my wheelchair is going to be down on the road. Who is who is going to push? Oh, I cannot walk side by side to
Somebody correct.
Where there's someone like you're not, why you're spending money.
Yeah.
That's the only question I'm coming up with. So is there what's your solution on what the other towns have done in this?
You know, I I don't know. I I've never looked at a a scope of a project like this doing a whole green. I I have no idea, to be totally honest with you. I mean, I do much smaller applications. You know, somebody will buy an old historic house that want to put in the old stone. I there was one customer, you know, ten years ago or so. We sourced the stone over the course of five or six years just to get the stone so she could get the walkway she wanted. And with that so long, it took me to locate the the kind of stone she wanted, antique stone. It happened to be brownstone. And that's just, I mean, that's stuff like that just takes forever. So a sub project this scale is just, it's large.
No. So my only my only suggestion is like, all right, if everybody wants to do it, if you break the break some of it, get it from other side and put the concrete on the side to make it by some way. I'm not going out there to spend to go X Y Z and find it, find a stone for the sidewalks. I'm not. So like, I don't leave it alone if not. Follow that idiot advice.
You, Councilor Nuccio, Susan and I, we have, I think,
Okay, um, thank you, Susan Lusacuse. I'm the chair of the Commission on People with Disabilities here in town. And I just want to kind of take a step back because I am not hearing a lot of what brought us to this point, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, especially our earthworks representatives, all due respect. I love walking on the green, too. I love walking on the sidewalks, but my daughter is in a wheelchair, and one of our commission members is blind, and they cannot walk on the green. And that's why we're here. We are here to fix that, to make it safe for everyone and accessible for everyone. So, you know, it's not about aesthetics. It's it's not about where the stones are going to come from or what you have to do to them. We have to figure out a way to make the sidewalks safe and accessible for everyone. That's why we're here. We have to figure out a way to make the sidewalks safe and accessible for everyone. That's why we're here. So pessimistic doesn't have a place at the table. Please, um, let's hear some solutions and ideas. And um. Go from there. Okay, thank you.
And I I kind of do agree that there was some consensus building asking, and I think there was a lot of discussion on. The use of, I believe, ARCA funds or even seeking out state grants for historic preservation that could help maybe alleviate some of those costs. Timeline might be a little bit more of a a difficult conversation to have in terms of, I think, at least you saying that the sourcing might be incredibly difficult, maybe going forward. As conditions improve, I know inflation and other things are an ongoing concern, but perhaps as public concerns go down, that there might be better opportunities to. The source materials and.
There there are sources, you know, you've got. You've got bluestone, which is a Pennsylvania stone just next door here. You've got granite in some places. You have a granite chist. Um, some of it was quarryed just up the hill in Garnet Ridge. Um, that quarry is closed, but that vein runs right through. Um, Bolton through Tolland into Stafford. Um, there are two quarries in Stafford currently quarrying that type of stone. So there's there's the possibility of of getting stone, how good it is again, I I.
That's fair. And then so Kathy Bach, your hand is up next, and then Councilor Lou for a second time.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Bach and I am on the Historic District Commission. Um, I've spoken on a couple of the different issues and I want to, I'm going to touch on them again, even though I'm sure it's going to be redundant. First of all, most of the stone on the green that is granite is the oldest, most likely that was there. And Rob has already mentioned that. Some of it goes back to some of the earliest stone, which is two to three hundred years old. Um, the bluestone that's there was. A cheaper, more easily attained obtained um replacement. The Hicks family, when they um replaced the granite in front of their home. To be historically accurate and nouveau at the turn of the twentieth century, did so with cement. And they did it in front of the Hicks Municipal Building as well, when they built that building for the town, because that was the new product at the time. Um, as one of the town historians, um, not the town historian, but one of them. Um, I suppose we can leave the cement at those two locations because that is part of our new town history, new being. What a hundred years old now, um, hundred and twenty, twenty-five years old. That's part of our history now. They took up the stone in those two locations. The blacktop was simply somebody's cheap. Oh, they the stone was broken. They replaced it with the tumulus. Um, it would be very nice if at some point in time. In that location, the town replaced stones where there's blacktop. Now, that's just some historic background. You, someone asked, what has some communities done on their historic greens? Um, I can tell you what Sturbridge Village does. That's a large project in a large re reproduction Victorian. Uh, eighteen thirties community. They use gravel. It is not great for wheelchairs, but is what they use. The the um town of Lebanon Green, a very large green, larger than ours. Uses gravel. Um, I would call it, um, which is that the um black stone um dust. That's what they've used. It's stone dust around their green. Um, it's not stone. It's their their green. That's what they did. They do not use. Concrete. That's what they've used. Um, as they've added it, it's not part of their historic green at all. That's what they added. To make it walkable. It's their solution to using um grass for transportation. Um, rather than having walkers and wheelchairs on grass, they use this um stone dust. So that's my homework to be a positive contribution. Talon Green. Is one of the few in the state that is in its original condition. It is on the historic registers in. Talon in the state of Connecticut and on the National Register in Washington. Um, we have. What has never been disturbed um and has been maintained. Um, I've advocated that we mark it as a. Historic walkway so people don't get hurt on it. They don't use it for power walking and other exercising and other things because it isn't. Anything other than historic walkway. Um, I advocate that we preserve it as a historic walkway. Because it can't be used for anything else. I think we need to come up with a different solution. I don't think we can make it what it's not meant to be. Um, we've talked about this. We can't make it wider. We can't make the stone smoother. Um, I don't know how we can. I mean, I've worked with, since I've been nine years old, I have worked with people with different disabilities. I appreciate all of the things we need to do. I've worked with Randa Nesman in the Capitol before she was blind and since she's been blind. She says she can work, walk on that walkway if we could fix that tree trunk or that tree roots. I still think we can do better on that walkway than we've we have, but I mean, she spoke at one of our meetings. Um, if we could take the roots out, I still think we can do better, but I don't think that that's the walkway that we should be advocating as an ADA acceptable walkway. Um, with granite stones. I don't think that that's appropriate. Um, so I think we need to be considering something different. Um, we have build that historic green as a historic green. I think that. You have residents that are anticipating it as a historic green. I think maybe we need to stop trying to. Turn a camel into something else or a horse into a camel or whatever we're trying to do and make an ADA sidewalk. If that's what we need so that it's safe for people. I have arthritis. I've seen people who with walkers. I don't think that that sidewalk will be conducive to people. That have these needs. I know I I know that Annalise's wheelchair can work on some things, but my walkers, my walker can't. Some other people's walkers can't. So let's make it, let's just go for, if we're going to do an ADA walkway, let's make it ADA. But let's not try to convert something that's historic and turn it into something that it's not.
So Kathy, are you saying let's make another sidewalk?
You can't just, you can't just jump in like that. You can't. See, this is not a venue for the two groups to start arguing.
No, I'm I'm not, I'm not looking for an argument. I'm just saying that I'm I'm simply saying that, you know, I think. I thought we had can come to a an agreement at the last meeting, but I I'm real, I guess we hadn't.
Sorry, no, just this point of work for everybody. This is not a venue for people to start arguing with each other. We need that. We're trying to build consensus. So we just need to have this discussion. That's what Mr. Simon's brought forward to us to discuss with the options, so. And there's also other counselors, so everyone just can't jump in and just start arguing with each other, otherwise that draws the entire meeting process, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, well, that's a perfect point. I mean, I think that was a point well taken. That for both sides, this is not an issue where, you know, at least my comments were not meant as far as, you know, minimizing any of the concerns. But I think it's something that we really need to take a look at, based upon the assessment that we've been provided by a professional that works in this field. And that would be most likely be one of the people that would be looking to do the work, that it's really not feasible for us to try and. Level out the stones to make them ADA compliant. I agree with uh with what uh with with Susan was saying, where. You know, we, why are we trying to make something that it's not? My answer is that. We need to make it ADA compliant because we are the town and we need, although we need to respect the history of the town. And what what some of the historic parts of it are, we need to provide to make sure that we have a safe place for all of our residents. And that we make sure that that it's we are compliant with what our requirements are. We cannot ignore one group over another simply to. To preserve a historic aspect of it. And I would really think that the the proposal of building a second walkway. I'm sorry, that would detract even more from the from the green, that you have this historic one and then another one next to it. I'm sorry, that's, I I think that's that's just outrageous that. You you know, that it makes it look even more bad. That it does, it it makes it even less likely that it's compliant with our his, the historic aspect that we want to keep. That, you know, that you're going to have this one that with the historic stones, but then a separate one that's ADA compliant. That that's just not, I mean, I think that's not feasible. And I think that that makes the ground look even worse. That, uh, so I think it's something that really we need to take a look at it all and or even saying that we're going to build a separate, smaller walkway. That maybe stone or gravel or whatever the whatever the pro- product that we use is next to these stones is just as bad. We really need to take a look at it to see what are we going to do that we can make an ADA compliant walkway that's as close to being historically accurate. But something that that we can still, that that still is is feasible. And I I think that, you know, unfortunately, it comes down to the fact that we have to move these stones. We have to create a new sidewalk where these stones are. And that's even saying if we can do that. Because we don't even know if we can do that, because again, this is private property on a lot of these places. So now we're looking at the issue of liability. We're looking at eminent domain. We're looking at so many different things. And that if we if if we then develop something or we we end up leveling out these stones. How does it expose these other people, the homeowners whose property that it's on? The liability. There's a lot of different aspects here. There's a lot of different issues. None of them are, none of the proposals that I've seen are adequate. Other than just replacing. That's, I mean, that's the bottom line. And that's the only thing that I'm really going to be voting. I think that we're trying to, we're trying to, you know, make silk out of cells here, cause that. And 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 it's not going to work. We really have to take a realistic aspect, realistic look at it. And 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 come down and recognize that we can't do this. And we have to find something that we can do that meets the requirements. And I think move beyond the fact of trying to preserve the stones. But try and make something that's as historically accurate as possible, but still be ADA compliant. I'm sorry for my rant, but this is something that really, you know, we spent so much time and there's so much bickering and we're never going to make everybody happy. And the more we try to make everyone happy, the more that I am convinced that we're going to get something that we will look back and say, what in the hell were we thinking? So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Newt. Yeah, yeah, so actually, that's good. Because Councilman, you can check on the Council, Murray.
Thank you for coming. You know, definitely heated conversation as it should be, because a lot of stakeholders and it means a lot.
Absolutely.
But I'm a little disappointed with Susan was saying last meeting minutes ago, it seemed like we're pretty much pretty close to consensus, which I was. Really, yes, feeling. Now I feel like I wasn't on the council last time, then I feel like we're going backwards. So we all know there's that new news from you. You don't seem too optimistic. Um, so as a council, we need to decide. In our historic district and special people with disabilities, one of our new staffs, and I relax. Like here, it can be done with it tonight and be able to move forward. I laugh, but it's it's. Times have changed, um, so. It's just confusing why we got one report. Now you went out and now you're hearing something.
Well, I mean, nothing against, I'm I'm assuming an engineer went and and did the report and everything. He's probably never handled a single piece of stone in his entire life.
But I thought he handled historic stuff. That's why.
Oh, he he may have dealt with historic stuff. Has he ever actually laid stone? You know, has he has he ever, has he ever drilled holes in the stone and put a wedge in it and split the stone down to a certain size? Has he ever worked stone? I mean, is are his hands bleeding it when he goes home at night? You know, I I mean, these are. I mean, I'm the I'm the guy who's who does this stuff, who who, you know, has crowbars and and a sore back and a couple of guys. It's a project. You know, can I make it look a a lot nicer? Absolutely. But there's engineering involved. I mean, I mean, I have to get the water to shed, right? It's a lot of work.
I'm sure it is, I mean.
I mean, I could get it, I could get it to be gorgeous. I I mean, it's it's already gorgeous to me, the fact that it's there. Could I get it better? Yes, but is it worth the money? I you know, I I don't know.
I think it is an investment for an entire community. You need to get it done. I mean. And did I saw a gentleman wailing down the road on a wheelchair, broke my heart. And I know it's further down, but he was going down a slope, but I'm like. Dangerous. Um, so.
We saw him yesterday. He came and said hello. I know you're you're talking.
But anyways, I would really like us to come back together, the three groups tonight and have something.
I I agree with uh what Colleen said. I felt like we left the last meeting. With a general. Feel, I I don't know, I guess, feeling that uh the ex. The Commission for People with Disabilities were really requesting an improvement uh on the green. With the intention of making the green accessible to a large group of people of different abilities. Um, and that uh we were going to explore and. Towards that effort, we were going to explore talking to Robbie about whether. His effort could be engaged in order to make a substantial improvement that would overall make the green. Easier to navigate for a variety of different uh abilities. Um, from from what he's saying, the answer to that is, if I'm interpreting this correctly, the answer is yes. It's not cheap.
Correct.
It's not quick.
Correct.
Um, and it's intensive.
Correct.
Um, and so I think as a council, as a community. We need to decide what are the priorities for this green and. Um, based on those priorities, which direction do we want to go in? Um, and I, I don't, I don't have the answer. I mean, I I have an opinion, but I certainly don't have the answer. Um, I am very. I struggle with this issue because at its essence, I see. A group of people who are saying we deserve to be able to access this green, and I agree with that. Um, I think everybody should be able to access the green because it's really great. And it's part of our community. It's a great part of our community. Everybody should be able to access it. Um, I am the liaison for the Historic District Commission. I've spent a lot of time talking to these wonderful people. Who have invested a lot of money, personal funds, as well as time and effort into maintaining. Uh, a beautiful historic center. And that's what, that's really what's important to them. That's what drives these people. And I appreciate those efforts. I think everyone does because the green, again, it's beautiful. Um, I think that this is a hard one, right? I I agree that not everyone's going to be happy at the end of the day. Um, I agree with what's been said before me that we have been bumbling over this issue for a long time as a town. And I think the reason we have is because it's very difficult. Um, it's hard to to make one group happy and one group pissed off. And that feels a lot like where we're going. Um, and it's not easy. Uh, I I don't know. I mean, is the committee with for people with disabilities? Still uh looking for an improvement? Or has the priorities for that group changed from our last meeting? I think that's a fair question at this point. Um, and I I think that the Historic District Commission continues to advocate for the historic preservation of this. Area because as we've heard a number of times, it is unique. Um, and putting a. You know, concrete sidewalk in with with the bumps for, you know, ADA, the full ADA compliance. Will not be historically accurate. Um, and what what direction do we want to go in? It's not, it's not easy. And I, that's what I'm struggling with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I do think, long term, whatever we go forward with. If we can find compromise or some level of compromise, I think this has to be on a capital plan. It has to be laid out clearly with a financial note that. We're long-term committed to getting this done, whether it's in phases or as one major project, I think. That's where I think we want to keep going around in circles is there's a lack of financial commitment or town commitment into a capital budget plan to save. This is a long-term project, you know, we put it in the capital plan and paid it off for the ADA walkways at Crossbars. You know, that's because we said we want to do this. That's that's the ideal. That's the goal. So we want to make that accessibility. So. I think it needs to be in writing at some point in the capital budget. So we wanna make that accessibility, so I think it needs to be in writing at some point in the capital budget. Sooner or later. Interjects, and we have a couple other people, I think, Councilman Mucio, I understand, times. And I think, if I share Reagan, and I mean, do have folks from the historic and vision people with disabilities with their hands up. Provide commentary or any questions, so.
Thanks, Chair, so this isn't a top two issues since I've been on the council. It's either number one or number two. Um, we've been talking about this for a long time, and what I'm hearing tonight is that. Discounting costs, let's just say we, we have the money to do this, whatever it costs. But what I'm hearing is if you take those stones and try to level them out as best as you can, I'm looking at these ADA guidelines. A max quarter inch lip is allowed, and and there are a few others that. Are 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 listed here, that to be ADA compliant, you have to meet these guidelines. Yep. It's not, what I'm hearing tonight is that you don't think you can do that with the existing stone. It's, it's physically impossible. It's impossible. It's impossible, okay, so there's no question to me that, that, that green needs to be accessible for everybody, there's, there's that, I'm sure of, there's no doubt in my mind about it. So now the next thing is, so what are we doing? Can, and then I start thinking about different things, can all the historic stones be taken out and then repurposed somewhere else? And then, then a, um, you know, an, an ADA compliant walkway be put in there. Using, using historic stones or whatever people decide uh, that they want. Uh, so that's just one thought I had, um, you know, so I, I, I'm still struggling too, and, and. Yeah, I mean, John, just to clarify something, I mean, there, there are stones there that have. Over the course of an inch and a half, two inch waves in one stone, a single stone. Right. And stones are twisted, you, you know, so if you have a, a stone that's the same plane like this table. Then you have one that's twisted next, this side might be an eighth inch low, that side might be a half inch high. The middle would, would match perfect. But this is natural stone, it's historic old stone, it's, it's not what's called a millstone where it's been machined and manufactured. So, so when you say you can make that green beautiful. Beautiful, mu- mu- much, much better than it is now, get rid of the, get rid of a lot of these little trip steps, I mean, you have inch and a half gaps. Some places now, there's an ADA mention of a, a gapping, I, I believe, but maybe no more than a half inch. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
These, these stones are a couple, you know, hundred years old, some of them, you know, hundred and fifty years old. They, they literally drilled holes in these things and snapped these with chisels, you, you know, so they can't fit. You know, that type, I mean, you know, sort of to go at it with a, a saw and start cutting, saw cutting edges on beautiful historic stone. I, I hate to say it, I wouldn't even do it. You know, I, I would make it, make, do the best I could do with the stone that's there and the best I could get. You know, with the stones that were broken to, to make them better, but that's the best you can do. And that's not gonna be ADA compliant though, correct? You're correct.
So John said, you know, this is again, it's something we've been talking about for going on six years now, and. We have listened to the Historic District, we have listened on the Commission of People with Disabilities. And I don't know if you all watch Stranger Things or not, but halfway freaking happy. At this point, like, you know, we, we're not, we're not gonna be able to have a solution that everybody is happy with, and frankly, people, that is our job. We have to do the hard things, we can listen to everybody, but we have to make the decision. And I don't know of anybody else, but I'm getting sick of listening to the same thing over and over and over and over and over again, like we, at this point. Where my head is, is leave the sidewalks where they are with a disclaimer that says it's private property and not for public use. And put a sidewalk in that's ADA accessible, that is, that is closer to the road, that is, that is something that everybody can use. At this point, you know, we owe it to our residents to have the green be accessible. I am able-bodied, it does not matter to me, I can walk up and down those stones, and I still trip. But I am an able-bodied individual who can do that. You know, there are, this is a town, we have one of the highest populations of special needs kids in the state of Connecticut. Across the board, and we have physical disabilities, we have all kinds of disabilities in this town. It is incumbent upon us to do the hard stuff. We have to decide, we have to just decide and move forward, put it in the capital plan, know that we're gonna have people who aren't gonna be happy about it. Either way, halfway happy.
Yeah.
Get as happy as we can, leave the stone sidewalk, mark it off, it is not for public use, it is historic. And let's find a way to move forward, whether it be putting down milled rock, the, the stone that you're talking about. A different stone that can be ADA accessible or a concrete path. Something that we know public works is gonna have issue with, plowing in the winter because of this, the gravel stone, because it's loose and snow blowers are gonna throw everything else and all that. We just have to make it accessible, and I don't wanna keep having meetings where people are gonna keep fighting about, I want this and I want that, we've heard it. We know what everybody wants, can we please do the hard stuff? That is it, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman Mucio, I, I do appreciate it, because even going back to your prior comments about the. Artist Festival being a marquee event on the green. That's a tourism attraction for the Historic District as well as a community and social event that should be accessible for everybody. So, just wanna add to that as well, and I think you can use that and try and. Build towards kind of making green, whether it's yoga or other events that, you know, everyone can access those events, so. I think you've those comments, and I do reiterate again that we really need to put this on the capital plan and get a project going.
I think first we have to decide.
Yeah.
You know, we need to decide, what are we moving forward with, and then they can price it out, we can put it in this capital, which capital plan is due in what, two and a half weeks?
Now I think you're at those comments, I think, at this point, it just seems like if you wanna have historic preservation, then the stones need to be as is, and if we're gonna wanna make ADA accessibility, then we need to. Create a clearly defined path that everyone can use. I think that's, that's a fair compromise, not everyone's gonna be happy, the aesthetic would be great, but I think other councils have raised that issue. I think it's time to put a six-year discussion to bed, and.
That's what makes sense, like, uh, with the issue on the side. As, 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 as everybody's saying that, make it accessible to everybody, for the concrete. On the, on the other side, and let's make it. Accessible to every single person.
Thank you, Councilor, so now I'll open the floor, I see another few hands up from the historic and people with disabilities, so I think it was Jody, Paul, Kim, like Kim and Susan.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, uh, Chair, Mr. Jones, um, I just wanted to say, I thought we had left the last meeting. Um, I'm looking at the minutes from the June twenty ninth meeting. Uh, which was the joint meeting, I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to review those, and. When we left, I thought we kind of all agreed that leveling the sidewalks to the best of our ability to the buildings where the majority of the people wanted to go. When we had a full board of the people, persons with disabilities and the Historic District seemed to be quite a consensus and an agreement. And we did mention that we can get funds from the State Historic Preservation Office. To assist with this, and I thought that the town was gonna be reaching out to find these grants and apply, they could do some engineering. Structure for us, um, a plan, we obviously know this is going to be at least a five-year plan, this isn't something that's happening overnight. Uh, as far as a short-term fix right now, we know we have the grass mats available, which we used for the Scarecrow Festival last year. I believe those can be used until the snow falls. We're not gonna be mowing the lawn on the green through the month of November, I can assume. So I think that that could be a solution right now for the events that are going on the green. And um, as far as replacing any of the stones. Um, I do agree with what our gentleman from, um, Earthworks is saying. They're historic, he's walked on them for ten years, well, I've walked on them for twenty-three years. My children were born here, they've walked on them for their entire life. And um, I can't see with trying to erase history. For something, as I've said before, people come and go, and history lasts forever. And if we want to keep our town on the state historic registry of historic places, and as I had mentioned last time. We are still seeking federal highway association recognition to make this a possible all-American road. Or federal scenic byway. This is a huge asset to our town, and will increase tourism hopefully, bring in possibly some economic development with, with. Everybody seems to be complaining about, and make a reason for people to wanna come here. And I think by ripping up stones and pouring concrete that is one hundred percent inappropriate to a town. That was founded in seventeen fifteen would just ruin it. And um, I mean, I lived in Vernon, and I lived in Vern in Manchester, and I lived in Bolton in a house that was built in seventeen eleven. And one of the reasons why I chose to live in Tallinn and make my home and have my children here and be involved in the Board of Education and work through the school system now in all four schools. For over thirteen years and volunteer a lot of my life to this town, including this commission. Isn't so that I can look out my window, which is at seventy-nine Tallinn Green, viewing the entire green. Watch it turn into something that it shouldn't be, as we all know. So I thought we did have an agreement before that we were gonna try to level the sidewalks to the areas that people wanted to go to, which could be the jail. The candy store, the town hall. Um, and things like that, which is very doable. Through funding that we obviously can get. Very easily, it seems to me, from the State Historic Preservation Office. And for now, the grass mats can work until you can figure out how to put this in the capital plan for a five-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody, and I think here are Kim and then Susan, Kathy. That's gonna be mindful that we're not, just certainly, I think, enough counselors have said it, a lot of the times, we're kind of repeating a lot of things, and you need to move forward with a plan. I know there was some consensus that you're gonna explore, that's kind of what this meeting was, as we were getting information. As we got the information, there's more challenges than I think the engineers initially found out, so. This is where we're kind of at, at this process, but I wanna give the opportunity to Kim, so I know they haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Hi, Kim Little, co-chair of Commission on People with Disability. Um, I just wanna say thank you to everyone who has been. Um, so kind to think of other people. Um, I think that people are more important than stones. Um, I think it's important that everyone have the same right to be able to be part of a community. And to be able to enjoy that community. Um, it sounds like Rob is telling us that it really shouldn't be done, that the stones should be left alone. Um, and that we need to make something ADA compliant. Um, I would say that, yes, I'm, I'm saying this for me, um, that. We need an improvement, yes, absolutely, one hundred percent. Um, and that it should be ADA compliant, um, whatever that means. Um, and I am not saying that we should rip up the stones at all. Um, but I think we need to think of more people um, than about the stones. Thank you.
If you're gonna put Kim and Susan and then Kathy, and then we'll go around one more time for councilor to make further discussion.
Thank you, so I think everyone has, has touched on pretty much everything. I was going to say, um, yes, to answer. Um, counsel person's Murray's question, are we looking for improvement? Yes, we are looking for. Safety and accessibility, um, that's what we did, leave the last, our joint meeting agreeing on, so that's why it felt good. The difference is now we have, um, the, the Earthworks representative saying it's physically impossible to. Do ADA compliance with the existing stones, so I don't know how we got two polar opposite opinions. Um, from two experts in the course of this, this project or this research, but that's what we got. So here we are, we, we are being told that it's not possible. You guys know that I've been, anybody on the town council for more than one term has heard me for years. Talk about this, speak about this before the commission even existed, Commission on People with Disabilities. And it, it's beyond disappointing to, to again be arguing, sorry about the argument, but. What, what do we have to do to put people over rocks, safety over rocks, accessibility over rocks, come on. Um, really? So, uh, yeah, I agree, let's, you gotta do the hard choices, you've gotta make some decisions. Um, this is like a merry-go, and yeah, a nightmare merry-go-round, we're just going around and around. So please, um, do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you, Susan, then Kathy.
Yeah, I, I just wanna reiterate, um, the comments that Jody made, I really came away from the last meeting. Uh, with a strong feeling that we all agreed, that we had come to consensus, and I think the word that we all came. An agreement was, was the word accessible, but I don't think we came away feeling ADA accessible, we just came away of feeling that. We wanted to come to a, a point of accessibility that we, and I think that was a compromised accessibility. And I may have misunderstood that, but I thought we all agreed that we wanted to keep the stones, that we could come to a place where. We felt that we could make the sidewalk that's there somewhat, some kind of accessible. Um, and I think that, that, and I think I hear that tonight too, that all the commissions agree that we can get there. I don't think it'll meet the letter of the ADA law of accessibility, but I think that we feel, I think I hear that tonight. And, and maybe wrong, but I thought I hear, I heard that from Kim and Susan tonight. That there is a, there's, there's some compromise room here for accessibility and keeping the sidewalk there and making it work. And I did not hear Rob say that that couldn't happen, I heard him saying he can't make it re- meet. ADA letter of the law, but he can make the sidewalk better and usable. I know last time and again tonight, I was trying to say that the sidewalk can be usable and better. It just can't, I know it can't be ADA accessible, not, we can't be four feet wide using the stone that's there, it can't be within a quarter of an inch. Of, of level, but I think, I really feel that we are in the same ballpark. I don't think, I mean, I don't, I, I don't think that we wanna make this not a historic green, I just don't think that. And I really feel like we aren't that far apart. And I, I understand Tammy's frustration, and all I can see is this concrete sidewalk running along the curb. In my dreams, and I think that's gonna be my nightmares if she gets that sidewalk, and I don't think that in our, our hearts that we really wanna see that. I think we really wanna see something working in the Historic District. That's historic, that serves all the people, so that people of every ability, every ability can go into the district. And feel historic, a historic experience, whether they're walking or in a chair or on a walker, they get the whole experience. Whether they're sighted or unsighted, they, I mean, I know when they come to the museum, whether they come in in a chair or, or they come in for a tactile experience. They need to feel the experience. So I think that we need to be able to give them that experience, and I'm not saying that's putting stones ahead, as, ahead of people. That's saying we wanna give them the experience. And I hope you understand that, that's not trying to make. Something more important than people, they're people, people are who made the history. So let's, you know, let's keep the perspective there, thank you, I don't wanna take up a lot of time, because I know you need to go around the council again, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, final one. I'm not, I'm not looking to have us spend hundred thousand dollars, which this is gonna cost. For a compromise or something that's almost good enough. I'm sorry, I did, that's not good fiscal responsibility. We're either gonna do it right or don't do it. I mean, and that's, that's really what it comes down to, and this is something that we can't say we're not gonna do it. So we gotta find, I, I think, you know. There's no easy answer on it, but I think I made myself clear as far as how I feel, and thank you.
And you heard the professor said that on some of those stones, there's a difference, there's a gap about inch and a half. And if there's a wheelchair, or there's a blind person, or if there's a, even you. Let me say, should the town take the responsibility of falling off? I don't think so. And Susan, I think you, uh. I think I, you, you thought that, should I choose a human over the lock? I think I would go with the human. With everybody accessible, it doesn't matter, me, your daughter, or anybody else. I think it's open for, or, the green is open for all, everybody. So, I'm. I'm good for that, thank you.
Counselor, any other comments?
Katie's first.
Katie, Mary.
I think, uh, that the concrete sidewalk running along side or on, it's on, it's going to be on the green, right? If we put a concrete sidewalk, it'd be on the green. It would allow everyone to access the green. It would allow everyone to see the green and to see the historic sidewalk that's already there. It's, we live, we don't live in historic times anymore. We have community needs that we need to meet. To me, it seems like a reasonable solution is to put a concrete sidewalk in, the plan for it, make sure it's done right. Make sure that it impacts the historic nature as little as possible, right? They make sure it's planned correctly so that we're not flooding out other stones. It would allow everyone to see the beautiful stones and to still access the green. I'd be in favor of that.
Counselor Murray, and I'll just add, I, I feel in the same way. I think what this whole conversation has really been about is creating the green as an accessible place for everyone and that the power stop ability. I think Counselor Luba raised, you know, the excellent point this evening in the last that a lot of those sidewalks are private property. And that's suddenly taking on private property of this, the right public good. So I think it's this body's decision to act and move forward in a way that does the best for the whole community to make a space that is renowned to be accessible. So, but thank you for that moment, Counselor Louva.
That's fine. So definitely need to do something for our community. So I'm just looking back at pictures. I mean, it is totally different what we talked about last meeting to this meeting. I mean, now we're going back to, am I right? Page twenty-seven, is it?
The Jason sidewalk, yeah, that's, you know, that one for the age twenty, the Jason concrete.
Totally different than what we talked about. I think the consensus was not that.
The consensus was to explore the option of replacing stones further. And I think that's why the design was brought forward because there was respect for, you know, more realistic, you know, solid earth opinions.
Let me, let me just add one. You know, you can make the stones much nicer than they are now. It, it, it will cost a lot of money, but when you get down to the ADA compliant, that just can't happen. As we spoke, and it just, it can't happen. But if you're trying to do something a little more period correct on the green, I mean, clay pavers were around, you know, a hundred and thirty, a hundred fifty years ago, two hundred years ago. Explore the use of putting clay pavers up there versus just concrete. I mean, that's, you want to keep it more in the historic district. Get creative somehow. Don't put the tool, don't, what's that?
That like comic stone?
No, no, it's a, it's a clay, like a, like a building brick, like the exterior of this building is made, made with.
Like brick?
Brick. It's a, it's a clay paper. It, it's, they're just made to be laid horizontally as opposed to make, used vertically with mortar. They don't absorb nearly as much moisture. You can still get antique looking ones. It doesn't have to be a concrete paper like what they put down, you know, the walkway out front. They lay very.
This is the good stuff we need.
They lay, they lay very flat. You know, there, there's a lot of different methods to it. But, you know, done right, it, you know, you should get, you know, fifty, seventy years out of it being near, nearly flawless for the most part. They're, they're fantastic. But that's something, you know, you know, I made the comment about me seeing two walkways next to each other. That just from a landscape design perspective, that's just, I've got to say no to that. If it was closer to the road, you know, I don't know where the town, town, uh, the people's property lines are or anything like that. If it was moved up closer to the road, I don't want to put it necessarily out of the road. You know, then you would end up with the separation and, and, you know, possibly really not even, not being overly noticeable. You know, if there's twenty feet between, thirty feet between some of the, the stones and that. You know, obviously that's not possible on the other side of the green, but on the side of the green, that, that possibly is. But the clay pavers is, is something I would definitely explore, you know? I mean, that's period correct.
Are they very expensive?
No, cheaper than stone, cheaper than stone, put it that way. Did you give out, did you give an option, your engineer that did the study, did he give an option for?
For clay pavers, only Jason concrete or Jason, uh?
Stone, stone dust, that's correct.
Stone, full stone and then stone dust.
Right.
I think it was just a.
Yeah.
It was like, oh, stone, like that, that was one of the most expensive ones, like the bigger, I think, stones, not clay pavers, but like big, so.
Yeah.
Hearing about clay pavers at all.
Yeah.
I know, I know, but that's a really good point, historically accurate, back to about a hundred and fifty, two hundred years.
You know, I mean, all, all it's, you know, they've been taking building bricks. You, when I was twenty years old, we actually used to use, do antique paper walkways where we'd use regular brick from a building. The problem is they absorb too much moisture when they're laying on the ground here in New England. They'll just, they'll, after the course of just two or three years, they absorb way too much moisture. But they actually physically now make clay pavers made for being a paver versus a building block. So they absorb very little moisture. So you get years out of it.
And they're available?
Yes.
They're available, they're not as expensive, they're historic.
Yeah, yeah.
Secret and insulation.
That's correct.
The secret is insulation.
That's correct. Yep.
No, so, yes, my, my next question, I mean, I'm something like we mentioned, the capital budget due in two weeks, is this something we're deciding today or? Please, I don't know.
I mean, it would be a agenda in itself, it was really only a discussion base, but I think we can have a general consensus here that we can provide direction to the town manager to work with staff towards, I think there's a, there's a commonality, I think, with anyone that, I've heard anyone differently that we want to create accessibility on the green and that at this point, it's better off to have a designated municipally responsible walkway that everyone can use and not disturb the historic walkway anymore than it already has been and preserve that in a, in a way that minimizes further degradation. It seems nodding heads, though. I think that provides some actionable, I, you know.
Yeah, in two weeks and the CIP.
You're the man to do it.
Illegal, illegal estimates and, and such, that lie ahead, um, without getting too into detail.
Yeah.
And, and again, maintenance and making sure it's done right seems to be the problem, uh, you know, in this town in looking at projects that we're trying to repair.
I think even getting a scope of work and getting a study established, a true, we have a outline, want to do study that said, okay, this is what it would look like engineering wise. This is the plan that's going to be laid out. That could be in itself a capital expense.
Oh, a building, yes.
Yeah, that we're actually putting our, our money where our mouth is to get this going. So I think that's, that's even a reasonable first set of steps.
Yeah, and I'm happy and relieved if you could provide, um, some direction in that, that we can, uh, we can start steer the ship here.
If we're looking at that, then my proposal will be Mr. Chair, through you, is that we, uh, look at the feasibility of running a second parallel sidewalk with the clay pavers getting, uh, or some alternatives, something along those lines that we could, that would be historically accurate still, but definitely, you know, a separate parallel line and, uh, and get a scope of work going with that. I think because that's one of the things that we need to do is see what that feasibility is. We've already got some plan, but then that's a matter of, we have to make contact with the state. You know, there's a lot of things, so I think, but it's a matter of at least getting some of the cost estimates for running something like that. And then we can start at least working on that.
Yeah.
That would be my proposal through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Louva. Is there any seconding for that, maybe as a straw poll discussion?
Well, I wanted to say, I think we need to find out what the steps have to be first. We have to reach out to the state before we even do that. Because I don't want to spend money on putting in engineering and a review of putting in a clay pavement, which, thank you, that is what we needed, but a clay paper path, if we can't do any of that without state approval first. So I think we need to understand what is the exact process at state first. Then if that's the case, we miss the CIP for this year. But, um, we walk down the path of getting the easement rights, then do, uh, engineering study, the clay favors, then possibly et cetera, et cetera.
And just as a, I apologize for my ignorance, but as a procedure, logistical question, can we plan on a, um, a dollar estimate in future capital years, right? We're doing the five-year capital plan. So can we, as that's being put together, yes, we don't know exactly how much this is going to cost, but can we earmark? Yeah, a range or two hundred thousand or some sort of a, a dollar figure to go out into year three or four. Um, I think that shows we have a real commitment to this process. We're starting to plan the finances, knowing that the exact dollar figure will change going forward. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we even have from page, uh, thirty-three of the document for the packet has a fault of cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, like the new stone walk is four twenty to five thousand. And I think that could even be used as a, as a marker for the cost of a, that's a higher end, but I think.
That's stone versus the concrete's a hundred fifty to two hundred. So, you know, maybe pick an in-between number.
Yeah.
To put in the five-year capital, not for year one, but for year two, three, four, five. You know, like, let's get it, let's, let's show a financial commitment to this, knowing that there's a lot more steps that need to be taken in the meantime.
I wouldn't be willing to go out past year two on that.
Yeah.
I think we, but we need to have an idea of, you know, the length of it, how much something like that would cost, if it would be in the range of a couple hundred thousand dollars, or is that super low?
There's a lot of decisions.
Right.
A lot of decisions in this.
There are, but I think we just, at this point, we need to do any of the process. Who do we have to contact first? We need to ease it right first before we can even go down that path. Second, I think we need to put something in year two that says, even if it shows the fifty thousand dollars for an engineering study, you need to actually get a project to do it. We have to have something in there. I would probably, as Katie said, I would probably feel more comfortable with a couple hundred thousand dollars in year two with commitment to have easement established, a process, a project in place, engineering ready to go. So that way we can also flip it over to STEEP and any other kind of grants that we can look at to be shovel-ready. I'm done, I'm, I'm ready to just start. Let's just keep swimming. In heck and Brian's plan, are you talking close, the, the green all the way down to St. Matthews as well? You don't know my vision. I want from Star Hardware to Town Pizza. So I'm going to sell right now, from here to there on both sides of the green. Okay.
But I, I think, I, I think that the one thing that we need is we need, I mean, going back to my military times, plan of action and milestones. We need to have a set thing where we're going to have this done. We've got the answer by the state for this. We're going to have the estimate and it could be concurrent running. But we set deadlines for ourselves. And that's what I'm looking at, you, Ms. Foley, for doing, is being, would get us a, a, a guideline so that we can have that set, so that we're not back here in another three months going, what the, you know, where are we? Because we need to move forward on this. And I think it's something is that, you know, I think that we need to get a plan of action going. We need to set certain milestones for ourselves to hit so that we're not, you know, not just spinning on wheels. I'm sorry for jumping in, Mr. Chair.
You're fine. Thank you, Counselor Louva. So I think at this point, I'll entertain just one final round of questions or commentary on this. I see Susan's hand is up, so, but I think at this point, we've kind of, we've exercised enough of this discussion. And I think we've given marching orders to our municipal leadership to get this going.
Am I allowed to speak? Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate this greatly. I, I love hearing the, the action. And I'm gonna put this comment out as my personal comment, not as the chair of the Commission on People with Disabilities. I seriously question the viability of putting a, a parallel sidewalk along the existing historic sidewalks all the way around the green. I, I just don't see how that can happen. So, um, my suggestion, idea, just throwing it in there, if we're going to put a new brick, whatever it's going to be sidewalk, why not do it in the shortest, most direct manner possible, which is along with, that follows ADA guidelines, um, right down the center of both pieces of the green. It, it could connect to the crosswalks on, on all ends. You don't have to mess with private property. All you have to do is connect it into the, the, the cut-ins and the crosswalks at the Tallinn Inn and then at the Congregational Church, Church and the Board of Ed, and then the town hall. And you've got accessibility to the entire green with one sidewalk instead of, you know, the whole circumference of the green. I know that probably doesn't sit well with everyone. And it certainly wouldn't sit well with my commission because our belief is separate is not equal. So, but my, just my thought, I'm throwing it in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you everyone for the robust conversation. Thank you, Mr. Simons, for coming out and enlightening us and giving even some new suggestions that, that brought forward from other folks. I think those will be some relations with you. And I'm sure Mr. Foley and going forward, trying to.
My pleasure.
Attraction, so thank you.
Really?
Yeah.
Sorry, Robert.
Welcome to the town.
Mr. Simons's father sat on town council.
Yes, I know, I did that.
That was back a few years.
Just a few.
Yes.
Thanks, Robert.
You want me to excuse myself or?
You're welcome to stay or welcome to depart.
I'd like to hear just a few more discussions if you guys continue to discuss. I might as well go home.
Change the subject.
Good.
All right, so we went to eight point four, which is a vacancy on various municipal boards and commissions. We did receive a communication from, I think, the county manager's office, that there was, I think, a typo on the town district commission that was for an all-invasion, and the term was also incorrect. So it should be corrected to nine twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two to eleven twelve, twenty twenty-three. So this letter was going to go out after the approvals and council meeting. So, and I think Brian, I know the unread emails, you're going to correct that. So I did it.
It's all my thunder.
I did, it's fine. But I apologize for that. But, um, if there's no, uh, issue with it, I would like to adjourn motion to approve the appointments as laid out in eight point four A to eight point four C. So, so by Councilor Muccio, seconded by Counselor Luba. Any further discussion?
Colleen's not playing tonight.
All right. There's no further discussion. I think why, just to want to make a record or recognize, I do see Mr. Olenek and I believe Joseph Golden, it might be.
This is about to be, this is about to be pretty anticlimactic, isn't it?
If you want to say hi and introduce yourself, you're more than welcome to.
It's all right. I'm JPL and I've probably met almost all of you already. It's good.
Thank you. All right. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. So congratulations to the various boards and commissions. And it's me looking at the list of what's available if you're in the audience. Moving on to nine, old business there is done. I'm ten is reported with town manager. I don't know if there's any new updates from your last report or?
None in writing. Um, there is an issue with the state, the police and accreditation. That'll be in the next town report, that every municipality that has a police department is going to have to be accredited through, um, posts and, and in short terms, uh, through the Police Countability Bill, there was a, a rule that every police department had to have Kalia accreditation. Kalia is an organization that accredits police department. However, with the Kalia accreditation, there's great cost, including a yearly or cost in inspections. And it's, there's obviously a, a, a financial end to it. So they, they, they came up with a post, which is Police Office, State and Training Council in Connecticut, accreditation process, uh, which is a little bit lower than Kalia and obviously much, uh, more cost-effective. However, the way the law was written, anyone that, any municipality, any entity that has uh, any sort of sworn police officers has to have this set of policies and accreditation policies. And having that, to give you some idea, in Hartford, we were not accredited police department for twelve years. We had a lieutenant who was a lawyer and two other, uh, two of our smarter people, Lobar, working on it as well. It took about twelve years to get accreditation. We right now have about six months to get most of the way done. Uh, plagiarism will be the key. It's, well, these policies are out there. And I'm, I, I had an attorney from Despereaux yesterday and basically said, why is this, why are we doing it? And you, the post should give us the policies and we should be able to write Tallinn at the top of each of these policies. Ours will be extremely limited here in that our police officers, too, um, don't have to leave the barn, uh, basically. So there's, you know, there's no pursuit policy necessary. There's, you know, we'll, we'll be able to lighten the load on a lot of things. So, um, I'm going to talk to, uh, the superintendent and get his, uh, And get his opinion out or break the news to him if he doesn't already know, and I suspect that he doesn't. And then work, I mean, the bottom line is we have to get it done. And I'll work with the resident trooper's office. There's a lot of things going on, and I'm gonna work with desk, and I'm gonna kick and scream with posts. About this as well, but the bottom line is we should be able to accomplish it. We really have about three or four years to get it done, but in July is our first. Test that we, we've produced at least most of the majority of the policies. That's a, that's a, that's a big effort on the horizon, and we just don't have the staff for it at this point.
Brian, do you mean the SRO and the animal control? Because our, our residents, okay, our resident troopers are covering the city, right?
What's that? Yes.
Yes.
And, and you would think. That we could say the SROs who were basically governed by the state police could fall under state policing, their accreditation. The way the law was written, more fun with that, with the bill is every municipality. And, and the pain goes in a lot of different directions. I mean, like the inspectors, DCF has sworn. People, they all now have to build their own accreditation. The, the policies are out there. It's just. A lot of fine tooth. Calling through them and eliminating and adding and specifying to tailor fit the, the town of Talon. Vernon has a book of policies. The state has the, 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 the manual that we can tap into, it's, you know, there's a hundred. I guess about a hundred different policies are required. We should be able to chip away thirty percent of that on the SROs aren't gonna leave the schools. But still, it's gonna be quite a bit.
Animal control.
Well, Daniel eleven, which is adopted.
She's calling to tell me I'm wrong.
Number eleven is adopted of minutes, I can motion to approve the minutes in eleven point one and eleven point two.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Council Murray. You know, the discussion, all of the favor signify by saying aye. Right, it's unanimous. I am twelve, corresponds to council.
I think we only had one email regarding police matter.
Thank you. And then Chair Kristen's report, the chair hour has been postponed. Since I'll be away next week, it'll be postponed to the following Thursday the thirteenth. And then there's communication from the citing council, I think myself and Mr. Foley, that the. T-Mobile request for approval for tower sharing was approved, so they're going to go through that process, so. Additional coverage for T-Mobile folks. Out that way, I think it's Peter Green Road is the power, so. That is it for me for updates from the chair, so all of them were communications and additions from council members.
So this is just kind of a housekeeping thing. I just wanna. I forget how I said this, from, from what it was before. If there are communications of anything that needs to be. Sent to the town council. In my experience as chair, when I was chair, the chair fits the agenda for a meeting, but information is not. Akeet through leadership. If there are communications or something that is relevant to the town, that communication has to come to the entire town council. It needs to come through the right channel, so everybody has access to the information, and it doesn't just go to leadership, get held there, and then the leadership gets spread down to their independent offices. So I just want to make that, that request. That whether it's sitting down with Rick or however we want to look at the charter or everything else, information comes directly to the entire town council. We are all equally elected, equally in the same position. Leadership handles the agenda and all of the communications go to the entire town council. So I don't know if we need to review that with anybody or not, but I am making the formal request that.
Reviewing it would be right now, understood.
Thank you very much. That's all it.
Thank you, Council Meechum. Council Meechum, you check?
Yes, you have been quiet tonight, but that's okay. So I think we missed something in the town manager's report. We got state grant for the Penns courts. So that is a great. Asset to a community. And I think all the council. Probably appreciates the hard work for our staff and especially the event or speaking up for them. Wants a meeting, so. Well done, and I agree with Tammy on some of the things you just said, but I. Thought we had a meeting a year ago, I can't remember, that outlined what we wanted the leadership to do to go through. Town manager, and then they just go to leadership, because that's what we have, but. Go back to the minutes and look, but I think. I don't know, I know, I know what you're talking about right now, Tammy, but. I think, am I right, Katie, you're shaking your head? I don't know. I know there was that meeting, it was before I was planning. So I think there was one question we have, you had a question given to the. But we all have equal access to the town manager. It is literally in the charter.
Okay, yeah.
I remember something that we discussed, so it was a while ago. It's a very fair and good question, so that's all I have.
Okay, any other counselors with communications or additions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to fifteen, which is all the participation on any subject in the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit. You're on Zoom, you can hit the raise hand function or start. Going once, going twice, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at nine thirty one P M.
So moved.
Council Luba, I think Council Meechum, a second. There you go, listen, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of them in favor, so guys saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you everyone, have a great night.